Carrie Beck, is that right?
Well, and May she...
Here.
Beck. Beck is asking back, back stress.
I'm gonna take your ass.
It's good. Sorry. Yeah, it's a good thing you have me there.
I don't know, it's not true. Not true.
So, how you doing this, this morning? Hello.
Hello, Mr. Craig.
Hi. There goes, yeah, Scott's gonna introduce, right, for the pledge.
That's a red sound. Last one.
Last.
Doesn't really... Saying we building, we building, we building. The commanders.
Good afternoon, guys.
Hello.
Hey, can't you go back and have an extra agenda, pretty busy. You have mine. It's all right, I can just wait.
There's a special announcement. Hey, Kathy, it's got to be down to take roll, but you can let Q take the roll if you want to.
Okay, we have about one more minute, so if anybody else would like to sign the public comment sheet, it's to your, to your right, my left, on the table. Okay, good evening, and welcome to the September the 5th, 2017 Abingdon Town Council meeting. I will ask Ms. Kim Kingsley, who is filling in for the Clerk Cecile Rosenbaum, to call the role, please. Mr. Craig.
Here.
Ms. Patterson.
Here.
Mr. Howard.
Here.
Mr. Humphries.
Here.
So, if the council will let me, I'm gonna ask the two young gentlemen I just met to come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Aiden and...
Ethan.
Ethan, Aiden and Ethan, okay? Stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, council, before the approval of minutes, at the 11th hour, Scott Sykes with the friends, I mean with the Abingdon Main Street, has asked if council will allow him the pleasure of introducing the new Main Street Organization Director. Is that okay? Okay, Mr. Sykes?
Thank you, Mayor Loeb, and thanks everyone else. I appreciate you making some time for us and moving us up on the agenda. I hope you'll pardon me, I'm juggling multiple responsibilities tonight, so I'm gonna duck out as soon as we do this. But, as you know, I'm here to introduce formally our new executive director of the Main Street program. I think you all probably know of her, or know that we've made that hire, and so I'm excited to do that. This was a pretty intensive process for us, we had well over thirty applicants for the position. So, there were a number of things about Carrie that stood out to us. One, her clear grasp on the full measure of what the program is about, the details, but also the larger picture, and more importantly, the potential impact that Main Street can have. Two, her clear perspective from a small business owner's standpoint of what the merchants and other property owners up and down the Main Street are facing, the issues and challenges that they deal with on a daily basis, and her clear enthusiasm for wanting to serve as an advocate for them. Three, the poise and clear way that she presented herself and her thoughts when she interviewed with us. She was very organized, and just had a very good sense of what she needed to say and how to say it. And then, most importantly, I think, the fact that she is a lifelong resident. And so, she has a good understanding of both the good and bad of that, but also, I think, a personal stake in the future of the town. So, we're excited to have her. I want you to know, on behalf of the rest of the board, that it's our clear understanding and made clear to her that we expect good communication between she, you, and other town officials. I think she and Mr. Kelly have already met to talk about that a little bit. And also, more importantly, that she have a good working relationship with Mr. Triplett, and Mr. Dearing, and of course, everyone else, but those two in particular. So, we're excited that she is here, I think Carrie has a couple of things to say, and if you want to ask some questions, too.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and town council members and guests, and I don't really know what to say after that lovely introduction. Thank you so much. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, I'm from Abingdon, and I'm a graduate of Abingdon High School and Radford University. And then, I came home after school and went to work for the Martha Washington Inn. I was their sales manager and events coordinator for several years. After that, I moved on to the Tavern, where I was a manager and special events coordinator for MAX as well. I only left the Tavern in 2013, when my husband and I were able to become the new owners of Chicken Little. And so, that was a pretty exciting adventure, and we're just celebrated four years right after the festival, and everything's been going great, and we're so happy to own such a seminal piece of this town. So, I come into this job, like Scott said, with a perspective on how small and larger businesses in this town work and thrive on Main Street. And my main goal in the first few months is to really build trust with our merchants, with the town council, and with town employees, such as Mr. Kelly, and Jane, and Tony Triplett. In order to keep the council up to date on the progress of Main Street, I'll be meeting with Mr. Kelly on a regular basis, and providing a monthly statement as to the progress of Main Street, and I will be giving you all quarterly updates as well. And I'm currently trying to work out the best day and time to hold open office hours, if you would like to come see me or set up meetings, but I'm not quite there yet, so. And I really look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you. We do appreciate that.
Oh, questions?
I don't have one. Counsel?
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Scott. So, now we have approval of minutes, August the 5th, regular meeting minutes. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'm going to approve the amendment of the August 5th regular meeting. Say, say his motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
And Mayor Loeb.
Aye.
Now is the public comment time, and at this time, the council will hear a public comment for those citizens registered to speak. Please come forward to the podium as your name is called. State your name, state your address, and identify any organization you represent. Each speaker will have three minutes for comments. Each speaker will be timed by the town clerk once your comments begin, and you will be given a cue when one minute of speaking time remains. Speakers are reminded that neither council, members of staff, or... Neither council members or staff will address questions or otherwise endangerous speakers during the public comment period. If you will, before the public comment period starts, I would ask you to check your cellphone and make sure that it is turned off, or at least on silence, so that we don't interrupt the speakers. Okay? And the first speaker is Robert Gilmer.
Mayor Loeb, appreciate you letting me speak this evening. I live at 238 Bartner Drive. Been there for, well, hadn't been there, but I've been in town for thirty-seven years. Moved here from Tazewell, I've had practices there, grew up in Lebanon, so I'm very familiar with southwest Virginia. And when I was growing up, Abingdon was unique because they had the Bartner Theater, had wonderful health care, it was famous agricultural training center, but you should have the tobacco and milk cow out there on your seal. But there's another thing that I found, since I've been here, that's been unique about Abingdon, and that is excellent local government. And I would like to congratulate this council, past councils, and future councils for maintaining that excellence in their concern for Abingdon. This council has been met with quite a few issues that had great opposition, had vocal opposition. The opposition was egged on and exacerbated oftentimes by local and Bristol media. They... I was, I was sort of the point man for the enhancement of the Bartner Green, and we met a lot of opposition for that. At one of the meetings, I thought, maybe I was gonna get shot, but I escaped. And, but it's interesting that the controversies that we are about now are very similar to these previous controversies. Coming Street was a huge controversy, and the building of the Creeper Trail was a huge controversy in the town and in the county. There was tremendous opposition, and this council was able to proceed with that coun... with that opposition, and was able to create this unique element of our... So, I would ask that the council always think of Abingdon and its enhancement in your decisions, and look at the opposition very carefully. I think we have some young men here that would really like to get off of that treacherous Russell Road, or those young people, I'm not sure if these guys do it, but there's some other young people that go across that road like a squirrel, and I've seen more than once, very close to having some injury. And I think that if we can proceed to put that... that, that element out on the Creeper Trail, which will enhance the Creeper Trail, I can't imagine anyone thinking that looking over at children playing in this forest would be an opposition to that. Am I done?
You're done, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, anyway, I'm looking forward to a positive resolution to this problem, and I think the town of Abingdon deserves it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Woods?
Mayor, Town Council, my name's Jimmy Woods, I reside at 1085 Canterbury Lane. I'm here to speak to, to you guys as representative of the Abingdon Youth Football League, a concerned parent of three children, and our town, and a taxpayer. First off, I want to thank you guys for all of your hard work that's gone into this project. And it should be applauded for your efforts thus far. You know, between Little League, Highland Soccer, and Abingdon Youth Football League, we've got over a thousand participants that take part in youth team sports. They'll benefit from the development of the facility. You know, you may not see many of the parents here tonight, more tonight than other times, because we've actually canceled games due to the weather, but, so we were able to get a few more out with us this evening. But, these parents have been absent from many meetings, not because they do not support the project, but due to the fact that many work forty, fifty, sixty hours a week. When we're not working, we're coaching teams, driving kids to practice, working on fields to prepare them for our children to play safely on, organizing refereeing games. You know, this project means that football teams who have had to go to fields, not ball fields, but open fields, in town to practice, won't have to do that anymore. Guys, we've got them sitting on the side of Russell Road up here, and on the side of Valley Street. Each evening from six to eight, you can drive from Latcher Field to the high school through Valley Street, and find eight football teams practicing in open fields. You know, Latcher Field's sixty years old, baseball and softball fields are over sixty years old. You know, we make the best with what we have, and what we have's not much. We really try hard to make sure that our kids have got quality facilities. You know, my kids have enjoyed the history of playing on the same fields that their grandparents played on. How many other kids can say that? It's not a whole lot. You know, it's time we change that. I want to thank the Town Council for having the vision, and I want to thank Food City for the opportunity, too, through the public and private partnership they've gone in with. You know, in 2005, Al Bradley, our former, former town planner, wrote regarding another controversial town project, the formation of the Virginia Creeper Trail. That Town Council had been through several battles, had faced opposition from landowners, including personal friends, but were guided by one principle: what would be best for the residents of our area, and what would be best for their children. This was twelve years ago, folks. He went on to say, the council members all looked at each other, and someone said, "Will anyone actually use this trail after we do all this?" Well, I'm here to tell you right now, there's over a thousand kids waiting, waiting, to jump at the opportunity to use the facility. And we want it, and they'll continue to do so for many years to come, so. I want, you know, I just want to thank you, thank this Town Council for being guided by that same principle, what is best for residents of our area, and what's best for our children. So, thanks again.
Chris Parks?
I too, I have no written comments, it's, I come to you speaking on behalf of myself and Ethan, who led you in the prayer, or the Pledge of Allegiance. But, in a more selfish respect, I want this built for a thousand kids, I do. But I want it built for Ethan. I want it built to stay right here and watch him play. But moreover than that, when he's twenty-five, or twenty-six, or thirty, starting a family, I want him to have this to bring his kids to. So, I applaud you for what you've done so far, I thank you for what you've done so far, and I also implore you to stay on that road, and let's get it done. So, that's the comments I have. I do thank you for what you, what you're doing, and let's, let's get it done, let's move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Howard McElroy?
Madam Mayor, and members of the Town Council, my name's Howard McElroy. I live at 160 Crestview Drive in Abingdon. And I'm happy to say that I've lived, my family and I have lived in this town now for forty years. And what a great place to live it is. Also, worked here for forty years, and now, my partner and I are now in the process of retiring, so it's not gonna go beyond forty years. But we plan to stay in Abingdon, and we raised three children, two boys and a girl. My daughter lived, lives now, she moved back to Abingdon with her husband and family. And they have two children, our only grandchildren, they live behind us in Abingdon. And had two boys who probably will not come back to Abingdon. But I'm here to speak briefly on, in favor of this development. Meadows. Sports complex, through the city complex. I think it's a great opportunity for our town to continue to progress. We're not living now in tents. We have to have tents and stockages, and... Over mountain, many gatherings, and all the streets embodied in Abingdon. But we live in the present, not in the past. And I think this development has the potential to help. It's not gonna be a one-shot solution to every economic problem we have. But it's gonna help, it's also gonna help keep young people and families in Abingdon. My youngest child was an athlete, and he played for many years with the Little League teams over our president's facility, and... Go there, and see the kids dart out on Russell Road. Feel, feel, remember, I'ma drive by. Make sure you got the guy, I have children, but it's the same thing there. Those cars go by there pretty fast. So, I just wanted to say a word of encouragement for you about this project, and secondly, to offer my thanks for enduring the hostility of some of those, not all of them, but some of those people who oppose this project. I know it has to be very difficult for public officials, elected officials, you know, you signed up to do this job, but on the other hand, you have to question yourself, "Why did I do it?" I have you doing it, I guess, because we appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Lane?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Matthew Lane, I'm the owner and president of the Lane Group. We're located at 310 West Valley Street, right here in Abingdon. We provide professional engineering and architectural services out of that office, and out of that office, we employ fifteen folks. My dad and stepmom own and operate Wolf Hills Antiques, it's located on Main Street in Abingdon. Both my sons attended Abingdon Elementary School from kindergarten all the way through the sixth grade. One is now a sophomore at Abingdon High School, and the other's an eighth grader at E.B. Stanley. So, when I stand here and tell you that I'm vested in Abingdon, you can believe we're Abingdon through and through, and we hope to always be. Our kids and grandkids do not have adequate sports facilities. There can be no argument to that, it's just fact. Just to use Little League, baseball as an example, and others have talked about this, there are over four... there are over four hundred and thirty-five, four hundred and thirty-five kids that vie for not only playing time, but practice time on those two fields on Russell Road. We should do better, and we can do better for our kids, and for our future. Hopefully, others here tonight will speak to that, and I know they already have. I want to spend what time I have left to talk to you about the benefits of this facility, at least from a businessman's standpoint, for Abingdon. And I've got some handouts, I'll leave those if you're interested in that. The University of Florida did a study on youth sports. Just to summarize that study, they found that over fifty-three million kids play some kind of sport in the country. It's a five billion dollar industry, that's the money that parents spend on equipment and participation. All the sports are growing. It's a lot different than even when I was a kid. Sports are really a growing thing in the community. Travel ball in particular is getting to be a bigger and bigger deal. It's a big business. It's just a big business. And the folks that have figured that out, the localities that have figured that out are reaping the benefits right now. Some of the other things that the study found, and just skip ahead, see my lights blinking, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars, that's what each non-local family spent to attend travel ball tournaments last year. And here's some statistics that I think you'll find very interesting. Seventy-four point two percent of all those people that attended youth sports events recommended the city to their own fam, or residents of their family and friends. Fifty-eight percent, over half of the people that attended a youth sport event in a city, came back to spend time after that. And I have a lot of other things to say. I had it down to three minutes.
We'd be happy to look at your documents and to make it a matter of record.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for all the hard work you do.
Thank you. Before we go further, could I get somebody to check that air conditioning and maybe turn it on a little bit?
Amen to that.
Can you make that a note, record to exit? Thank you so much, John. Matthew Lane, and now we're down to Bruce McNulty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the Council, thanks for serving. I just got a text a couple hours ago saying there's a meeting tonight, and to come out and support, so I did. So I wanted to give the, well, first of all, I live on Flanders Memorial Road, which is out Bridge Valley Road. It's a technically Bristol address, it's Washington County, kind of between Bristol and Abingdon. My kids play baseball in Abingdon, I work in Abingdon, they go to school in Abingdon. And I wanted to give you a perspective just from a baseball dad. I've got two boys, been playing Little League for about five years here at the facility Russell Road. And as you know, I think the biggest problem is it's fairly crowded, there's really no room to expand. That busy road right in the middle of it makes it fairly dangerous. And I did want to share, last year during the baseball season, when I brought my two boys to their baseball game, I was actually stopped at the crossing area, waiting for people to cross, and a lady smashed into me from behind. You know, and I didn't even hear her hit the brakes, so, you know, part of me, we were all okay, but, you know, I thought to myself, had I not been sitting there, what would have happened? And I think it's a matter of time. I mean, I don't think that it would be very long before something really bad happens there. So that's a concern. I did want to talk a little bit about, my kids do play travel ball, and, you know, we just had a tournament down at Domtar in Kingsport this weekend. And I want to share just from our family's point of view, my, the rest of my kids love coming to the games, they love the concession stand, they love everything about it. We're usually down there for lunch, Saturday and Sunday, and that money goes to Kingsport. This weekend, we played, there were teams up there from Asheville that traveled up, okay? Those, obviously, kids were staying in a hotel somewhere, and it was in the Kingsport area. There's a lot of benefits to having a facility where you can actually bring people in from out of town, bring money in from out of town. You know, once people see Abingdon once, they want to come back, and this is the reason to get from here. As far as, you know, location, I'm not going to say that Mary's Meadows is the best location, I haven't really researched it enough, but I do feel that no matter where they pick, there's going to be opposition. And as you guys well know, you can't make everybody happy. And so I think, you know, where this is going to be located is a perfect location. I don't think it'll be an eyesore. These facilities, like down at Domtar, they're really beautiful, groomed well, and they're not an eyesore at all. I just feel like the benefit to the kids, and I don't know, you know, when I was a kid, there would be people, kids would be playing pickup football, pickup basketball, am I done? You don't see that anymore. They're in home environments. And this is, this is supporting them, getting them out, playing in the dirt, that's what I want. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Spanker.
Stephen Spanker, representing Marathon Realty Corporation, Kevat Foods Stores, One Food City Circle here at Abingdon. The Meadows project has caused a great deal of discussion in some division within the Abingdon community, to say the least, unfortunately. While that is certainly unfortunate, it's not necessarily uncommon. Large projects often generate a lot of attention, much like the Creeper Trail many years ago. I do feel it should be recognized that this town has made significant commitments related to the responsible development of the project, while recognizing the concerns of those opposed to the project, while also providing a needed asset for the many citizens who favor it. It's a true and fair balance. Whether it being commitments made in the memorandum of agreement within the Section 106 process, or the requirements of the Certificate of Appropriateness process for the commercial component, we have witnessed the significant time and effort put forth by the Town Staff, the Planning Commission, the members of the Council to see that this project is developed properly. I've worked on many projects in many places, and can say that the town of Abingdon should be proud of how it is represented in the practices that are in place to ensure thoughtful design and development while upholding the strict, the highest construction standards. I don't think anyone in this room can argue that the sports complex won't provide much needed practice and game facilities for the youth of Abingdon. The facility will also provide a host location for various local and regional tournaments, drawing numerous visitors to the community. While this will be an economic driver itself, the commercial portion of the development will have a significant economic impact for the town and the county. Private investment is expected to be in excess of thirty million dollars. And the project will include nearly a hundred and ninety thousand square feet of retail, office, and hotel space, creating approximately six hundred and eighty-eight jobs, three hundred of which will be net new jobs. This investment, combined with the project's estimated annual sales, will generate significant incremental tax growth. Third-party qualified estimates project five hundred and sixty thousand annually for the county, and over one point three million annually for the town. Again, incremental sales tax growth. Over a fifteen-year period, that will be nearly twenty-nine million in new dollars for the region. The development of the Meadows also allows for significant infrastructure improvements in the exit seventeen area. As a direct result of this investment, their desperately needed exit seventeen interchange upgrades have finally received approval and funding through VDOT's smart-scale program. In addition, Cook Street and Greensprings Road will become part of a four-way controlled intersection, which will greatly improve the traffic flow throughout the area. In closing, we want to reiterate our ongoing commitment to seeing this project become a reality, and also want to thank the Town representatives that have worked hard to ensure that this project is successful. You undoubtedly have the best interests of the town in mind by recognizing the true and far-reaching merits of this development for all of the area's citizens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Karen Buddington.
Thank you for letting each of us speak tonight. My name is Karen Buddington. I live at 169 Stonewall Heights. I've lived in Abingdon, Virginia for twenty years. In that time, I've raised two children, fifteen-year-old, almost sixteen, and a twelve-year-old, keeps us busy for sure. My children have played football, baseball, softball, and many other sports in between. When our children were young, the town of Abingdon intended to build ball fields that would benefit our own children. Several of those projects fell through. I support the development of Mary's Meadows for the following reasons. Development of green space for the town of Abingdon. I feel that the development of green space at Mary's Meadows will provide a much-needed space for all the children of Abingdon, and will bring families together to spend outdoor activities together in a consolidated space devoted to sports and activities. This one ties young families, as well as grandparents that come to Abingdon and stay in Abingdon. As we have all seen before, if the children and families aren't happy, the families move out of Abingdon, taking their jobs and their money with them. Number two, economic development for the town of Abingdon. The town of Abingdon has a responsibility to entice businesses to Abingdon, and to provide jobs and economic development to this area. The town of Abingdon also has a responsibility to support the existing businesses and to keep those businesses healthy. We live in southwest Virginia, where businesses see the beautiful topography, but may not decide to stay here if the town is not supportive of their business. I live next door to the corporate office of Food City. They have been excellent neighbors. They are clean, neat, and have made the entire project of tearing down the JMH Hospital bearable, and turned it into a beautiful site right in the middle of the town, which I thought was pretty amazing at the time. If the town of Abingdon doesn't make it attractive for businesses to move here and stay here, thousands of jobs may be lost. And this town, while lovely and historical, may die on the vine. The sports landscape has changed for families. Families quite often travel every weekend to attend tournaments, and as much as I don't love that, that's the way it is, and it has changed for each of us. The economics of an attraction of ball fields for tournaments in this area could bring money to local businesses like hotels, bed and breakfast, restaurants, grocery stores, banks, whatever you name it. If it's here in Abingdon, it would probably benefit from it. As an example, the city of Kingsport has Domtar Sports Complex. It is a very large complex, probably three, four times what the Food City complex may be. The complex brings in eight million dollars in revenue to the city of Kingsport each year. If we were just a fraction of that, what could the town of Abingdon do with that tax money that could be generated from this project and not from our very own tax base? My children may not benefit from this development, but I believe that the town of Abingdon will. Thank you.
Thank you. Mindy, and I'm not going to pronounce your name right, but I think it's Bonin?
Bonin.
Bonin. Mindy Bonin. Mindy, I have your husband's email, so...
I had nothing to do with that.
Okay.
It's okay, I'm sure it's okay. If it's not, I didn't have anything to do with it. I promise you. Okay, as you just already stated, my name's Mindy Bonin. I live at 555 Sam's Way. I'm a transplant from Lexington, Kentucky. I've been here fifteen years, and like Miss Buddington said, when I came to this town, they were planning to build the ball field. I was all excited, my son was not born yet, but I was all excited. Still not here. So it struck me the other day, when I was going through town, you know, I'm coming through town, I'm going by all these places, I went home and got my camera. Do you know, on that given day, the twenty-fourth of August, I went to the Abingdon Bible, there was flag football going on. I went across the street to Abingdon Elementary, there was soccer going on that one field, the lower field. The higher field was a travel baseball team. And on the field behind that, on the baseball field, was Pee-wee football. I got back in my car, drove through town. On the low league field, there's a travel baseball team. On the lower field, there's a travel girls' softball team. I drove out, went to the school board, Pee-wee football, playing in a curve, no fencing, no guardrails, nothing, playing in a field. Now granted, football's supposed to be played on a field. I don't think that's what they had in mind when they said they were going to play on the field. The girls' high school soccer were down on the other side of the school board, across the street, was girls' softball. At E.B. Stanley, we had three different age groups of football, practicing on a square, basically. Here's the proof, here's the pictures, same day, same time. This is not your daddy's sports. We don't have sports that last six weeks, nice, tidy, that go away. They last year round. Dear God, we need a place. We need a place to play them. And what I don't get is, these people want green space. Would you look at these pictures? All you see is green. These are fields, and it's green, 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 green. I don't even get the issue. If we're here to protect green space, what better way than to put fields on green space? I'm going to close with a flag that I own proudly, says, "Abingdon is a beautiful place to live." Something my great-grandfather told me once, is the beauty is in the eye of the beholder. And I'm going to tell you something, there's a space in my backyard that's dirt, and half the time it's mud, because the kids in my neighborhood are playing in my backyard. You can see it from Google Map, 555 Sam's Way. It is that big. And I tell you what, I have the most beautiful lawn of anybody in this town. And I hope that you all will give other chances for kids to see a beautiful, a beautiful place to live in Abingdon. Thank you.
Nan Harmon.
I would like to get you all these pictures, sorry. And this is a little article on the benefits of all the sports, the health benefits and the psychological benefits.
Okay.
All that, prime. And then...
Hi, I'm Nan Harmon, 498 Greenspring Road, Abingdon, Virginia. Two parts tonight I want to discuss. First of all, this is in light of a letter to the editor, to the Bristol Herald Courier on August thirtieth, mentioning Friends of Abingdon, I think we've been referenced tonight, and expressing a desire for an exposé on the Friends of Abingdon. And I had some feedback from our group, and all this, I would shed a little light on us. We're quite a varied group with various interests, and we do have some things in common, one being a passionate concern for our town of Abingdon and the direction it's going. We are active and retired, working and retired, teachers, stay-at-home moms and dads, grandparents, employees of all levels of government, farmers, small and large business owners, domestic and international, physicians, land surveyors, engineers, service employees, PhDs, attorneys, entrepreneurs, psychologists, historians, archaeologists, retirees, they're still coming in, retired nurses, banker, retired book editor, conservation contractor, retired chemistry professor, composer, art restorationist, licensed professional counselor, retired military, artists, writers, et cetera. So we are a varied group. And on another subject, on the sports fields, I do agree with most of the comments of these sincere folks, and I know everybody is sincere in what they're saying. And I think we need sports fields, apparently we've needed a sports complex, it's long overdue, and we need a good-sized one. I just believe that the Meadows is the, it's not large enough, it's the wrong place. People are talking about the travel ball, and everybody I've talked to who has kids, grandkids, who've had to haul kids around to these, you know, games, it takes several fields to have travel ball, where people will come in, spend the night at a hotel, spend money, which we love tourist dollars. But the last iteration I saw of the sports fields, there were three regulation soccer fields, one practice field, and four baseball diamonds. And that is not enough for travel ball, and I stand corrected if somebody wants to correct me. I think it's too small now, there's no room for growth, and I think we need a larger space. I think, apparently, it should have been done a long time ago. And I would like, if the town could, to publish a current design, or the latest design of the ball fields, because it might be interesting for the people to see exactly what's going to be there, and how large the facility's going to be, and what the growth potential is. You've still got a large pond there, the home that will hopefully be saved, the big mansion. You have another holding facility... You have another holding facility for water from the Food City runoff. So we'd just love to see a current design on that. And thanks, everybody, for speaking. It's been enjoyable. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Joe Levine.
Joe Levine, 350 and 340 Greenspring Road. On behalf of Friends of Abingdon, I have a position paper I'd like to read, and I have copies for everybody. Friends of Abingdon recommends that the Abingdon Town Council contract for an independent comprehensive financial analysis of the Meadows project, something not undertaken up till now. The sensitivity analysis from early last year was insufficient at best. What this council needs is an in-depth revenue timeline analysis for the entire project and the underlying assumptions used to calculate the cost and revenue stream. Many changes have taken place in the last two years. Publix abandoned its shopping center near Exit 7 because Publix could not fill the out parcels. We must ask, how many of the proposed Meadows out parcels are under contract so far? Has this town council seen copies of the contracts? The Washington County Administrator Jason Berry has stated that the area's retail is saturated. Reevaluation of the Meadows project is in order. Existing Abingdon retail food merchants are having trouble filling existing positions, as evidenced by the number of help-wanted signs. More than half of Bristol's debt is the result of the Falls Plaza at Exit 5. Bristol has no choice but to deal with the problem. However, this town council has the opportunity to reevaluate the merits of the Meadows project. The recent Davenport Transportation Impact Analysis reveals that the proposed roadway entrance into the development and sports complex is insufficient and will need to be redesigned. When will the examination, the TIA Traffic Impact Analysis, and the redesign of the system, of the road system be initiated? How will this affect the cost-revenue analysis of the project? Based on the changing retail picture and the new information received from the Traffic Impact Analysis, we believe it would be reckless and irresponsible to continue to encourage and facilitate the project without the guidance of an up-to-date comprehensive financial analysis. Further, allowing the developer to claim confidentiality or to withhold assumptions and doubt are necessary to complete an independent comprehensive financial analysis would be a failure to exercise the council's fiduciary responsibilities to the citizens of Abingdon.
Thank you. Thank you. Jill Harless.
Thank you. I dress like a sports parent, as a sports parent. I had a tidy little articulate thing written out, but to tell you the truth, I just want to address some of the other comments, why there have been great comments made. But I do want to address that I think we're getting caught up in some emotion and not facts. And I think it was pointed out that when Nan said, "This is not big enough for travel Two years ago, I've been doing my homework for two years on this, and two years ago, one of my first phone calls was to Domtar. You all have heard this, but not the parents have. So, and Domtar, yes, they did explain to me how it affects their economy. They open up, for people to stay in their hotels and fill up their restaurants, they open up citywide parks and run big tournaments that are dozens, dozens of fields, not four. Nobody's going to come in and want to build a hotel or even fill up our current hotels with four extra fields. And I think that we're getting ahead of ourselves, thinking, you know, I have been back in Abingdon for 10 years. I grew up here, moved my family back for 10 years. And again, I have talked to officials for 10 years about sports parks and more facilities. I found out, in the last five years, the Abingdon Town Council has ignored other possibilities for a sports complex. There was a farm, a huge farm, available at Abingdon Elementary. There were two different parcels near the Combs Center, and there's 40 acres still available for free, if my information is still correct, for free on Hillman Highway, where our kids aren't butted up against the interstate. And I say "our kids" because it's too late for, my youngest is 14. But where you aren't butted up against the interstate, where you're breathing diesel. The interstate, anyone, traffic is 60% diesel trucks right now. I wouldn't want my child right next to that inhaling that. And it's come to my attention that somebody asked for an air quality test, and that was turned down. I don't believe your true intention has been the youth of our area, from the get-go, has been the carrot to push through the commercial development. And while we desperately, desperately need something done, the Meadows project is years and years, the sports project is years and years and years away from groundbreaking and completion, and people need to know that. Another location will be faster, bigger, more economical, and better. And we have that on Hillman Highway, if you'll look into it, please.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I have, and I don't know the time of these, so if you'll please time these also. I have a letter from Mr. Brock Blankenship. I wanted to send you a personal email to let you know where I stand on the future of Abingdon and Mary Meadows sportsplex discussion. I'm an emergency physician, former chief of staff for Johnson Memorial Hospital. I also run my own business and teach at the College of Medicine at ETSU in Johnson City. My wife and I have three boys, and unfortunately, I will not be at the meeting because I'm coaching at Bristol. We love Abingdon. I personally feel if there is one reason that we would consider leaving Abingdon, it is only for our children. In fact, one of our greatest emergency physicians, who trained with me at Wake Forest, left Abingdon for just this reason. Dr. Cannon was the highest quality and volunteered his personal time to the Creeper Trail Association. It saddened me to see Dr. Cannon leave, mainly because I helped recruit him into the area. I also recruited Dr. Carter, Dr. Dawson, Dr. Sanders, Dr. Carr, Dr. Biaska, Dr. Zalamea, Dr. Webb, and Dr. Simmons. All of these are also of the highest quality and collectively have 16 children, yet several have left the area. These are the quality professionals and families that you want to bring into Abingdon and keep locally. They are the people I want taking care of our patients, and they will leave beautiful areas like Abingdon looking for opportunities for their children. Call it crazy, but my wife and I currently drive to Johnson City two to three times a week for our boys' sports teams and spend many of our free weekends in Kingsports or sports fields elsewhere. There are a lot of your Abingdon residents doing the same. We've been patiently hearing of your desire to create something for the children of young professionals, our children. It would be sad if you abandoned the plans for a proposed sportsplex, especially knowing that this would bring significant revenue to our local businesses and help retain young professionals. Please contact me if you would like to speak personally about this or if you would like me to speak to the entire group at a future meeting. Respectfully, Stephen B. Blankenship, M.D. Ready for the next? Okay. The next, Dear Mayor Lowe, sending my support for the proposed sports complex in Abingdon. I will not be able to attend the town council meeting tonight because I will be attending an Abingdon Youth Football League game for my son. As a mother of four little athletes, I have traveled to most, if not all, of the surrounding area youth athletics facilities, and it still boggles my mind that our town still has such poor facilities. This community desperately needs facilities that can accommodate the growing youth programs, and investment in our children is never a bad investment. Please note my support and best wishes, Julie Ferguson, DDS. Mayor and council members, I am ready to express my support of the proposed sports complex. I'm the mother of two boys that have participated in sports for many years. We have participated in Abingdon Little League and Abingdon Youth Football League, and we also participate on travel teams. My boys will probably be too old to use proposed facilities, but I want better for all children and for future generations. I love Abingdon and wouldn't want to live anywhere else, but the lack of adequate facilities for sports, youth sports, is unacceptable. I can't begin to express how frustrating it is to cross Russell Road with sports equipment on your back and hanging on to young children with both hands, or how frustrated I am now that my son's football team is practicing on a flat spot on the side of the road. And I could go on and on about how much money my family spends per weekend when traveling to nearby towns and cities to play and travel tournaments. There are so many reasons to build a sports complex. I know that the town has faced a lot of opposition on this project, but please continue the good work of building the sports complex. It is past time for the town to invest in the younger generation and in the future of Abingdon. Thank you for your time and consideration, and this came from April Lane. Ready? Dear town council members, I'm sending this email to our town council to support of the sports complex in Mary's Meadows. Our youth in Abingdon are in desperate need of more sports fields, as the fields we currently have are not sufficient to support the amount of teams we have. Both of our sons play travel baseball and Little League. We have spent the past eight years spending thousands of dollars at fields and restaurants in Kingsport, Bristol, and Johnson City that could have been revenue for our county. We have practiced at 8:00 at night as little boys because there are not enough fields for all the teams needing to practice. We have dodged traffic on Russell Road and dealt with no parking for events. Please think of the youth and the future of Abingdon when you make your vote. Give us our sports complex. And that is Autumn Boggs. And the last one is, Dear Mayor Lowe, I want to go on the record as an ardent supporter of the sports complex development at Mary's Meadows. The athletic fields are urgently needed in Abingdon for the youth in our community. Please let me know if there's anything I can do to assist you in supporting this development. Sincerely, Robert Bonin.
It's okay. You can add that to my... Okay. Okay, and I'm going to give these to the clerk, please. Petitions, public hearings, and harsh rating of ordinance is none, second rating none, consideration of bids. Consideration of bids for bridge deck repairs and overlay on Coming Street, Matt Bolick.
Good evening, Mayor, town council. Pleasant to be here tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I do feel this is further straight forward. Our bridge inspection recommended some repairs to our Coming Street Bridge last year. We put this into our budget request for this fiscal year. The bids came in happily under budget, so I would ask that you approve the bid and be looking forward to repairing the Coming Street Bridge.
So for the record, will you say who the bid is, how much the bid is, and is that your recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. The little bid was Crossroads Bridge from Marion, Virginia. Their little bid was $71,844.50, and I recommend we authorize that bid for Crossroads Bridge.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I do, ma'am.
Okay.
Matt, this looks like a widespread in bids, and I understand that happens sometimes, but you had a detailed set of plans and specifications within the bid, so everybody was bidding on the same thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, I agree. We did have one outlier.
Well, I know that happens. I just wanted to be sure that we had a detailed set of plans and specifications that we could hold a little bit of.
Yes, sir.
And for the record, everything is going to be specs exactly like you're providing, and there shouldn't be any sway either way of, on the materials, everything's going to be spot-on?
I believe so.
Comparative? Okay.
This is similar to what you did at the bridge on East Lake several years ago.
Yes, sir. Mr. Berry said we're with the boxy.
Okay. Any other questions? Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I move that we award a contract to Crossroads Bridge of Marion, Virginia, for the Coming Street Bridge deck repairs and overlay in the amount of $71,844.50, and authorize the town manager to execute any and all documents necessary.
And I second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Neil Lee.
Aye.
Okay. Update on the urban path project, Matt Bolick.
Let me skip one. Skip.
Oh.
Well, it's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, reports from the town manager, assistant town manager. Consideration, Matt, you just stay right up front here. You can just have a seat, and then I'll get right back. Okay, thank you. Consideration of request from the citizen board for the purpose of examining FOIA requests. Cindy Patterson, counsel.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. I wanted to clarify that just a little bit, because it sounds a little bit, it would be quite an undertaking to look at all FOIA requests. So that's not my intention. What the intention was, it was a little bit misconstrued, if that's okay, the world of emails. What I'm looking at, and I hope that the council would also go along with and have this in a work session meeting, that we need a citizen committee to review how the town is handling FOIA. In other words, to recommend a FOIA framework policy. We don't have a frame policy at this time for FOIA. And I just would like to recommend to start this with a work session, and would ask you all if you would consider that, and let's work with the citizens of Abingdon in regards to open FOIA, more open FOIA. We can either, number one, we can, not me, but other members that want to do this could work in secretive FOIA operations, or we can also come out and give all of our citizens everything that they're asking for, with the exceptions of some of the rules that the FOIA has laid out that we cannot share with some of the citizens. There seems to be quite a bit of a gray area that is disclosed up to the FOIA officer, whether she or he can disclose or not disclose if they want to. So that's my take on this, and I hope that you all will join me in that effort to include citizens of Abingdon in this committee.
Well, I can see there'd be some liability involved in this adversely to us, everyone of us. I'm willing to listen, but I'm not real for it.
What would you think the liabilities could be, or can we discuss that here?
The information that's coming out, I mean, there could be information that could be used adversely on anybody. Social security numbers, that was a big thing with the Friends of Abingdon, one of the social security numbers. That could come out. I mean, I will listen to you. I will listen to the request, but I'm not for it right now. Maybe I could be changed.
Okay. I appreciate you.
Ms. Eisenhower is the FOIA officer. Do you have anything to say at this time, or would you like to just get some notes from Ms. Patterson and...
If it's going to be discussed at a work session, I'd be happy to attend and hear what you have to say.
So do we have a, we all, does the FOIA office have a policy in place that follows the Code of Virginia?
The Code of Virginia is the only policy. There aren't local ordinances. There are possibilities of setting certain things that are very limited, as far as thresholds for charges and those types of things, but FOIA is FOIA, and it's given down each state.
Okay.
And I did require, as to whether any other one can apply anything quite like this, and the answer from the state FOIA office was, no, not to their knowledge.
I reiterate, Bob, at this point, not for this. I cannot see where Layman would be more adept or two in trying to come up with the FOIA request of what should or could be done, rather than someone that's professional, you know, a lawyer, or people, someone that had been trained in it. Also, I think that would open up some liability with having someone...
So that's my take on this, and I hope that you all will join me in that effort to include citizens of Abingdon in this committee.
Well, I can see there'd be some liability involved in this adversely to us, every one of us. I'm willing to listen, but I'm not real for it.
What would you think the liabilities could be, or can we discuss that here?
Information that's coming out, I mean, there could be information that could be used adversely on anybody. Social security numbers, that was a big thing with the Friends of Abingdon, one of the social security numbers. That could come out. I mean, I will listen to, I will listen to, to the request, but I'm not for it right now. Maybe I could be changed.
Okay. I appreciate you. Ms. Eisenhower, yes, the FOIA officer, do you have anything to say at this time, or would you like to just get some notes from Ms. Patterson and?
If it's going to be discussed at a work session, I'd be happy to, to attend and hear what you have to say.
So do we have a, we all, do, does the FOIA office have a policy in place that follows the Code of Virginia?
The Code of Virginia is the only policy. There aren't local ordinances. There are possibilities of setting certain things that are very limited, as far as thresholds for charges and those types of things, but FOIA is FOIA, and it's given down each state.
Okay.
And I did require as to whether any other one county can try anything quite like this, and the answer from the state FOIA office was, no, not to their knowledge.
I reiterate, Bob, I'm at this point not for this. I cannot see where Layman would be more adept or two in trying to come up with the FOIA request of what should or could be done, rather than someone that's professional, you know, a lawyer, or people, someone that had been trained in it. Also, I think that would open up some liability with having someone there that maybe would, and we're liable with the town if we appointed them. But that being said, you know, we certainly, I certainly listen to whatever the argument would be.
Well, we as employees do have.
Could you come to the microphone?
Some insurance, but I'm not certain that a citizen group would have that.
Insurance?
Right.
Can you say that again?
I'm not certain that our insurer would be able to insure anyone from a community group who would be making policy or decisions. It was a very new topic to Alan, whom I spoke with at the state office.
But a citizen committee itself wouldn't be allowed to make policy, take on and make recommendations.
Well, he never heard of, of having a citizen committee, so he asked me if it were a policy, and I told him I simply didn't know the intent.
Right.
The intent is for all transparency as possible in the town of Abingdon.
Are those FOIA requests not put up online? Or would I put the FOIA requests online?
We have on occasion. I'm not sure that all of them are there.
I mean, if that was the, that was the purpose or intent, let's just, let's just put all the FOIA requests up as they come in online.
It's not the request. It's not the request. It's when, when, when citizens, the request is going to be, it can get too cumbersome. They're not going to, the citizen board would not look at each request. That would hold up what you have to do, Ms. Eisenhower. It's not possible to any, each request, but it would be a framework of the committee to look at the framework of a, of the policies. Let me get my notes here.
There was one other thing that the Director of the State FOIA Commission said that it sounded to him as if it could become close-kin to unauthorized practice of law. So that would be certainly a liability.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I thought you were finished. I wanted to ask you a question. I'm under the impression that, that some localities have a FOIA policy that is separate and independent of the state law, and I think that that's what Cindy is talking about. I'm not sure myself, to tell you the truth, but I'm under that impression.
There can be policies. Generally, those are, I don't know of any other way except council may.
But we have to worry a delinquent state. We can only do what the state authorizes.
The state authorizes us to set policies so long as they are not contrary to the state.
So, so, Mr. Kelly, do you have anything to say?
Yes, the current state law requires that the town of Abingdon have a specific FOIA designated officer, which is Ms. Eisenhower. She's been designated for that purpose. I'm not aware of anything in the law that allows for, I'm not saying that it doesn't, but allows for such a committee to be in existence to recommend policies to the town of Abingdon. The laws on FOIA are republished every year, and each council member gets a revised copy as, as those get republished every year. My, you know, I want to, I want the town, obviously, to be as open and transparent as possible, and oftentimes, you know, you, you give out information that perhaps could be excluded, but you go ahead and give it out because it, it just eliminates any extra controversy in, in the matter. But proprietary information does concern me from a liability standpoint, and I would hate to think that any member of the public would be able to see proprietary information. I think that is something that Ms. Eisenhower needs to look at. She needs to redact all of that information, and whether you had a policy in place, in my view, a policy that you might put in place relative to FOIA would be something that we've talked about before, and that is charges. How much do you charge for a FOIA request? Those, those types of things. But that, that would be my take, and in light of what the FOIA council said, we would be setting precedent among the state if we created some type of committee, and probably needs to be some more research.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you for, for that statement. We could, we could be like a pres, set a presence here and, and all, and ask other cities that surround us to join us with this, because of the gray area, because of the exorbitant amount of money that we charge, well, I don't charge, but it has to be charged to the citizens. It's kind of a deterrent to not being able to get the paperwork, and that's been a complaint, a very frequent complaint.
How much is, how mu, like, how many FOIA requests do you think we've had this year? Do you have just a ballpark idea?
This year, probably, I'm going to guess, I will have to defer to Kim because she probably has, is the bookkeeper of, of the numbers. I would say this year, a hundred?
I was going to say a hundred, a hundred twenty-five. Since January or since July? Since January.
Since January. And some of those have been quite large.
So, and so you had, so it's a hundred twenty-five on them, and those take, and, and when the billing is done, is that billed on the amount of time it takes to produce the documents, or, tell me how that, that works?
It's a combination of the number of copies. We charge between twenty and twenty-five percent, twenty-five cents per copy, and that depends on whether it's colored, whether it's printed on both sides. I know the courthouse charge is fifty cents. We can only charge our costs, and those are as close as we can come. And then as far as an hourly charge, we take the hourly salary, we have to calculate this for every employee who touches FOIA materials. We have a per hour charge, that's minus, that's salary minus any sort of benefits, and then we actually play on the low side.
So the town actually absorbs the benefits of someone doing the work for a FOIA request, and we, they, they absorb the benefits of stuff, too, so they're not even charged for that who is asking for the FOIA.
Right, we do get some recompense for tax dollars of the whole population, when only a smaller part of that population is requesting.
So we've had a hundred twenty-five approximately requests this year. How does that stack up with requests that we got six years ago?
Six years ago was much, much fewer.
Oh, a hundred, ten, fifty?
I would say fifty.
Thirty?
Yes.
Thirty.
I wonder why that would be.
I think you should know, if you know something wrong with you.
Okay.
I do, I do have a, a couple of other comments, Madam Mayor, members of council, just to, and I think everybody understands this, but under FOIA, there are different types of records that are treated differently. You might have law enforcement records with investigations. You will have personnel records that have to be dealt with differently, and you also have financial records that have to be dealt with in a different manner. So it takes a very qualified person to be able to read the specific rules and protect the, the individual's interest who the records are being requested against, from a liability standpoint. That's the lawyer in me coming out, and I'm not trying to steal any of Deb's thunder.
That's okay, I'll share it.
But there are those complications, and I do think that the insurance company definitely would need to be apprised about something like this prior to the creation of something.
So, uh, let's, let's try this first. Let's see if we can't come up with a general schedule using the current salary of folks that generally touch this information, and see if we can come up with that, maybe to present at the, at the next council meeting, a schedule of charges.
We have a.
You do have it?
We do.
That's what they're charging, that's what they're lacing on.
But have we ever made it a policy?
No. We haven't.
Okay.
But we have applied that, and in a very lenient sense.
So, so why don't we, why don't we present that to the council?
Would you also mind checking with the insurance carrier to see what that they would think about, about a citizen, a FOIA citizen committee?
I've already posed that question. I didn't get an answer yet, but I should have that fourth time.
Well, come on here. Careful. I still want to reiterate, the gray area where the count, the officer, the FOIA officer has power to, whether to share that information with citizens and whether they don't, that's quite a gray area, and.
Well, I, you know, I, I hear what you're saying. I have to tell you that we have a well-trained and well-paid staff of people who do their jobs, and we have to either trust them to do their jobs or not. Deb Eisenhower is bound by the, by her oath not only as, as a council appointee, but through her legal and professional ethics. So is Mr. Kelly, so is Ms. Rosenbaum, and so is Mr. Banner. So, you know, there's, there's, it, it, it becomes a question as to how much you want to micromanage the people that work for you, and I am not interested in that. I don't need to do their jobs and mine. You know, I, this is a, this is council appointees, we set policy, and we oversee budget. That's our responsibility. And I do not want to get into, and I'm speaking only for myself, but I do not want to get into the practice of micromanaging every department and all the work that they try to do on a daily basis.
Kathy, I agree with you on that, but I, I'm not clear on what a FOIA policy is exactly, if it's just, if it's simply, as you described, a statement of charges. I would like to just to have, as Cindy suggested, just have a, bring this up at the work session, and any council member that is interested in FOIA policy, come prepared to discuss it in a work session. What are your interests? I do think we have a responsibility to provide some guidance to our staff at, at times. I do not think we have the right to manage and, uh, micromanage, and I'm not in favor of that at all, but I would be open to hear what, what other people have to say about a FOIA policy.
Okay. Counsel.
I have another question while you're here, Ms. Eisenhower. How many other requests have come through email as far as FOIA since the policy started, so to speak, what you all wanted to do with giving the FOIA request to each council member via email? So since that time period, since.
I'm not sure, I understand.
I haven't gotten any FOIA requests.
Yeah, you all were sending us those through email. You wanted us to look at these FOIA requests, each one. That was, I think the Bristol paper had one, Mr. Macbeth had one, that's when it started. And so since then, how many requests have you all had since that time?
I didn't get one. I, I never got one.
How many, how many times have you and Ms. Kingsley gotten any, any FOIA requests from citizens of Abingdon? Have they just stopped now, or have you, we're not getting any on our emails?
I, I tell you what, let, let's.
Well, I need to, could you please answer the question?
I really don't know what the question is for sure.
Okay.
But if I've sent you email information before, by email, it was requesting your emails, because.
No, it was requesting that, that, what you, you, you all had set up is FOIA to be presented to the town council in email format, and you all sent us those emails starting with that certain date. Those were two of them. The Bristol paper, I got one, and then Mr. Macbeth, and those weren't, both of those weren't for me. It was to send to the entire council. Would you like for me to read the email?
If I receive a FOIA request that asks for council emails from someone to someone or.
No, this wasn't what that was about. It was, we are starting new this policy of you all are sending the council members' requests for FOIA, who is, who is requesting FOIA information, and that was in a, in an email format to myself.
Well, I think I know what Ms. Patterson's talking about. Let, let me let Mr. Kelly.
Yeah, I, I think, I was just talking to Ms. Kingsley, and I think that that was something that was discussed by council about doing, but because of time restraints, it's never been done.
But we got the first two emails.
Things have really backed up, Ms. Patterson, I apologize. I'm the one that dropped the ball on that.
Okay, well, no, I don't, I just want to know if there was any since then, because I haven't received any.
Things have been crazy, and I take all responsibility for that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we had more requests than that, because I was kind of concerned.
Is that all? Yes. I think that is. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Did we even vote on that?
No, I'll just.
Mayor, I, I, I would just like for someone to place it on the work session agenda to discuss.
Okay. So you're asking for a work session agenda for FOIA requests specifically?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Counsel, I have a pretty tight schedule in October. I will not be available until the eighteenth of October.
October is a sound given month for me, period. October is our busiest month. There's no way I can do it in October.
Are we having a mid-session, weren't we?
She was trying to schedule one, but I can't do it.
Okay, so.
November.
Okay. November fifteenth.
Is that the holiday week?
No, it's after the holiday.
Is this going to be, Madam Mayor, is this going to be a noon meeting?
I would hope that we could do it at noon. If we do it on a Wednesday, can we do it on a Wednesday, Bob?
Sure. I'm good with November.
November fifteenth.
I'm okay.
Let me check my calendar.
Okay.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. That'll give plenty of time to get the answers to liability and some of the other concerns that were raised, and so let's say twelve o'clock on November the fifteenth, is that okay with everybody? Okay. All right, I've added that to the November the fifteenth work session about the Freedom of Information Act. Now, update on the Urban Path Project, Mr. Bolick.
Hello, I see you again.
Thank you.
My update for the Urban Path Project is relatively short. I would like to say that the plans have been submitted to the VDOT Bristol office. They have been approved by the Bristol District. They were then forwarded to the VDOT Central Office, and I learned last week that Central Office has approved the plans for the Urban Path, and they have now forwarded them to the Federal Highway Administration for their final approval. And that is the final step, and once the feds blast the plans, then we're authorized to put them out for bid.
Okay, and you will, you will let us know the minute you put that out to bid, correct?
I will.
Thank you.
We already have the bid documents ready on the line.
How many years has it been on this?
Two thousand and ten. When was it, two thousand and ten?
We're going, we're going on eighteen years on it.
That's good.
He's got the bid documents already.
Well, it was right-of-way acquisitions and.
Right-of-way acquisitions where they are. Right-of-way acquisitions in the whole.
Mayor, I'd like to ask Matt a question. Matt, would you clarify something for me, make sure I'm not confused? I know Jane is, or Ryan is out in the audience, so. There's an overlap between the Park Street project and the Urban Path project, and at the last meeting, I believe, I understood that we're going to take the urban, the overlap out of the Urban Path project and address the Urban Path in the Park Street project. Am I correct on that, or, what, explain to me one more time what that, what that. I correct on that? Or what, explain to me one more time what that, what that, what's happening there.
Yes, sir. I believe that you are generally correct. There is some overlap between the urban path and the new Park Street project.
Yes.
And because the Park Street project is a, is a larger, larger-scale project. It has quite a few more layers to it. My suggestion would be to eliminate the Park Street section of the urban path and put it into the Park Street project.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Two reasons really for that is, number one, I would hate to, I would hate to build something on Park Street that then we rebuild as part of the Park Street project, and we'd waste that money. And secondly, we have a better cost-share agreement with VDOT for the, for the Park Street project.
Okay, that's what I thought. Jane had asked me that question, and I, that was the way I understood it. And, and I just want to be clear on that.
I think you're correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes, if I could, if I could add, the project will wind up being exactly, or very similar to the way it originally was. So, don't think that we're simply taking a gap out of the project. It will still exist. We're just getting the best bang for our buck by using the better choice of funds.
Okay. Go on.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Anything else, council?
Thank you.
Great. In consideration of change in time of regular monthly council meetings at 6:30 and dispensing with 5:30 work session meeting, they are low. And I have spoken to many of council members. First thing I did was read the charter, and I always thought it said 7:30, but I did go back to the document, and it says "at a time designated by the town council." If we have our meetings at 5:30, we wind up with feeding people and, and people that don't get to leave work for 12 hours in a day. And so, you know, we can schedule work sessions as council asks, like we did tonight. And I think that, that we are, you know, we wind up discussing the same things twice. And so, I'd just like to see us come at 6:30 here in council chambers and, and have our meetings in council chambers. That gives everybody an hour and a half to go home and have a bite to eat, and, and then come back in a little more refreshed. And I'd like for council to consider that.
Mayor, I'm perfectly okay with, with what you're suggesting. I have one request that we don't have work sessions, that we get more reports like we got tonight on capital projects and, and current matters. For instance, it looks like we're not going to have a work session meeting in October. I would like to have a report, up-to-date report on the urban path, up-to-date report on the Park Street project. And I, I would like to have a report on, on, in light of tonight's concerns about sports fields, I would like to have a report on where we stand with some temporary sports fields, and I would make any progress to alleviate that concern. So, I'm okay with it if we could have a few more reports on things like that.
I think that, that's notable, Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Yes, I, I will comment relative to the last thing that Mr. Craig mentioned is that I know our Parks and Rec, Kevin Worley has gone out, and we had talked about the field that used to be in existence up at the Higher Ed Center. It measures out that it would be perfectly suited. I just have not had the conversation with the president of the community college yet to see if he will allow us to use that.
That's the kind of information that I would like to, to have.
And, you know, we had so many things on old business, but as I've come to realize, until people are, have their whole plan together, for instance, tourism zones, until the whole plan is ready to be presented to council, you know, you're just talking about things. So, we can put them on the council agenda, and everybody can hear their presentation at the same time. If council is not ready to vote on it at that point, we can put it on the next month's agenda and ask for further information. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, could I have a motion about moving the council meetings?
I'll, I'll make a motion to get it to 6:30 before that.
Okay. One second, though. Okay. Any more discussion? All right, roll call, please. Mr. Craig?
Aha.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mayor Le...
Aye.
Resolutions none. Old business work session agenda items not covered during work session meeting. We didn't have a work session, but...
That'll have to be rephrased in the future.
That'll have to be changed. Appointments to board in committees. I'm going to move down to the Tourism Advisory Committee. Allison Mays from Washington County Board of Supervisors has notified Jane Dearing, Director of Tourism. She is now able to serve on the Board of Supervisors, as the Board of Supervisors representative. So, council, I'd like to have a motion, if you will. The Tourism Advisory Committee, Ms. Dearing is not here, but we have two ex-officio members that are non-voting members. The, one is a Board of Supervisor who represents Abingdon, and the other is, is a town council member. I am the member that has served on Tourism Advisory for probably six or seven years now. And Mr. Humphries is the alternate for Tourism Advisory. They had a meeting today, and I will admit to you that I missed it because it's usually the day after the council meeting, and so I did not go today. And I'm going to let you all, if you will, vote on this, and then I'm going to tell you a little something about Tourism Advisory.
In light of Ms., Ms. Mays was put forth by the Washington County Board of Supervisors to be on this committee. They have not rescinded that. She just thought she wasn't going to be able to be a member. Since she now feels like that she can serve, I would not think that Washington County has withdrawn it. It's, it's still very representative. So, I would move that we nominate, or we actually elect her to her, to the Office of Tourism Advisory Committee.
Do I second?
I'll say.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have no problem with that, except I think during our last meeting that we were supposed to get in touch with Mr. McCall. Did anything happen?
Apparently, Ms. Mays and Mr. McCall discussed which one of the two were interested in serving, and Ms. Mays notified Ms. Dearing that she would be the Board of Supervisor appointee. Okay. Anything else? Roll call, please. Mr. Craig?
Aha.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
And Mayor Le?
Aye.
I, I looked at the Tourism Advisory Committee list, and there's a little bit of a... information is not the same. So, if you will speak with Ms. Dearing, during a Tourism Advisory Committee meeting, they had wanted to move some folks into other slots because they were having trouble filling what the council had, had asked in that Tourism Advisory skeleton. So, if you'll get with Ms. Dearing, I think the Tourism Advisory Committee thought they could move people around, and I, but, you know, I think that has to be a council appointment. And so, it needs to be a request from the Tourism Advisory Committee, but it does need to come to council.
She spoke with me after the meeting, so we got it on through October.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sustained, Abingdon, appointment to fill vacancy due to some members resigning. Council, you have Virginia Howland, Small Business Incubator, appointment to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Frenchmore Jr., and you have appointment to fill the vacancy due to some members resigning. Would you like to go into closed session?
I would, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So, I need a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended, Section 2.2-3711A1, for the purpose of considering applications to fill positions on. And it says the Planning Commission, but we don't have a Planning Commission appointment. So, I'm going to pass that and say Virginia Howland, Small Business Incubator, and Sustained, Abingdon.
I'll say move.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Howard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Craig?
Aha.
Ms. Patterson?
Aye.
Mr. Howard?
Aye.
Mr. Humphries?
Aye.
Mayor Le?
Aye.
Okay. So, I'm going to go in, and we can discuss Sustained, Abingdon, and then I'll come out. Okay?
You can run your main ears, can't be involved in any special. Can't do any special activities.
Counsel, I need a motion to go back into open session.
Make a motion to go back in the session.
And could you read the certification, please?
You so certified that the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened was heard, discussed, or considered a meeting by the public body.
I made a report to the body, but I left the name. So I'm told I can call for a motion on the Virginia Highland Small Business Executive Board appointment to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Frenchmore Jr. I will be abstaining from the vote because I am the executive director of Virginia Highland
We move that we table this until after the at-large vote is taken.
And could you read the certification, please?
You so certified that the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened was heard, discussed, or considered a meeting by the public body.
I made a report to the body, but I left the name. So I'm told I can call for a motion on the Virginia Highland Small Business Executive appointment to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Frenchmore Jr. I will be abstaining from the vote because I am the executive director of Virginia Highland
We move that we table this until after the at-large vote is taken.
And could you read the certification, please?
You so certified that the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened was heard, discussed, or considered a meeting by the public body.
I made a report to the body, but I left the name. So I'm told I can call for a motion on the Virginia Highland Small Business Executive appointment to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Frenchmore Jr. I will be abstaining from the vote because I am the executive director of Virginia Highland Counsel, do you have a motion?
We move that we table this until after the at-large vote is taken.
And could you read the certification, please?
You so certified that the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened was heard, discussed, or considered a meeting by the public body.
I made a report to the body, but I left the name. So I'm told I can call for a motion on the Virginia Highland Small Business Executive appointment to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Frenchmore Jr. I will be abstaining from the vote because I am the executive director of Virginia Highland Counsel, do you have a motion?
We move that we table this until after the at-large vote is taken.
Mr. Craig.
sit offhand, is is that once again, September 20th, 21st, and 22nd, we will be playing host to the Washington County and surrounding communities. Smith, Russell, Wise, the city of Bristol, some of them in Selva, Kansas City. Fifty young school children to come out for the Over Mountain Victory Trail Association celebration. Those three days will be held from approximately 9:00 until 2:00. The public is invited to come out and check and see what the school children are learning and the stations that they, that each one of them go to, which will be approximately 15 stations. And then on September the 23rd, which is a Saturday, September 23rd, there will be an adult or a open for the public, Over Mountain Victory Trail also. That is Saturday, the 23rd. And then after that, there will be going to General William Campbell's grave and also John Brody's grave, one being in Sawville and one being in Aspen Vale, which is close to Chilhaui. Those will be on Saturday evening. This is probably the 30th year that those have been gone, that they go to. The DAR puts that on for the remembrance of General Campbell and John Brody, both of them significant participants in the Battle of Kings Mountain. And that is all I have.
Okay. Counsel, I just needed to call your attention or make it a matter of record that that counsel voted to table the sustained having an appointment until the matrix is updated and we have more information.
There was no motion.
There's no motion. So I need a motion.
Just need more information.
I just need a motion to table it until the next, or to.
I'll make that form motion. We didn't know how many members had resigned and we just needed that information before we could even make an appointment.
I'll say your name.
Okay. Roll call please. Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
Mayor Lo.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can I make one announcement?
You may.
The Washington County Fair opens on Monday, the 11th. It's coming up. It lasts until the 17th.
Okay. Okay. So I have one thing to say and I got news yesterday and I think probably most of you in the room that knew Danny knows that Danny Freeman passed away yesterday. Danny's had a long, hard battle. He had a liver transplant not too long ago and he did pass away and we send our condolences to his Khaleese family as well as his wife and family. And having said that, I think that it goes without, it goes without saying but we should say it more than we do when I say that this council and every council that I've served with appreciates all of the work and time and energy that the staff puts into doing their job. They've done their jobs professionally with the utmost of care and it's during times of trouble that you realize just how important the staff is and how important it is to the town of Addington. There are approximately 136 full-time employees and we have many, many temporary and part-time employees who, who get the job done and take care of the town and the citizens in a manner that, you know, that we even get fussy if a limb's not picked up. But we have probably one of the most professional and best staffs that, that none can, can bear. And I just want to say thank you for everything that you do for this council and I know that the rest of the council joins me in giving you our sincere appreciation.
Yeah, and one thing, when you mentioned Danny Freeman, we did lose a fireman last week to the cancer. He'd been with the fire department about 30 years. David Leroy Low.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did. I put that on the Facebook page and I forgot to mention that, yes. And Leroy had been a long time, was he a captain?
Engineer.
Engineer for the, for the fire department. And it's always very sad when we lose a member of what we think of as our family. So our condolences also go out to Kathy and Amy and the rest of the Low family.
And I do have a comment too. Remember the folks and the victims in Texas, you know, they're our neighbors too. So I'm very sorry about the deaths in our fam, in our family, in our community here and also keep the Texas folks in mind. I think going through a whole tragedy and I'm glad we don't, we're not having to go through that. We're very blessed. I agree.
One more thing. There's a William King event, the one that you're going to be at, their affiliation with the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts. That's what I'm doing, but what day is that?
Is that a set up there?
No. No, it's in the 20s sometime. There's a William King, William King is going to reaffirm their, their.
Here it is.
Okay.
The opening reception is September the 7th. However, they are, they invited you and I to a meeting, I think it's the 9th of, I think it's in October.
It's a reaffirm, it's the affirmation or reaffirmation of the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts in Richmond, their affiliation and, and the bond that they still maintain. And so several, the, I guess, the director and the president of.
I think that's one I forwarded to Kathy.
The museum, yeah. I thought it was in the 20s.
I cannot find that right this second in my emails.
There's also a reception.
But Betsy did, okay, here it is. Betsy did ask, send an invitation and she said, I do hope you and at least one or two of the council might be able to attend this. Please try. And it is a reception hosted by John Litz, the President of the Board of Trustees, and Betsy White, the Director. It is the Virginia Museum of Fine Arts and they invite the council to, council and I'm assuming staff, to the reception to celebrate our statewide partnership featuring live music from acoustic heritage on September the 12th at 5:30 PM.
Will the VML date up in Rich, Williamsburg interfere with our county council meeting?
Yes ma'am, I believe they do. We have not talked about changing the meeting yet because we don't know who is or isn't going to VML conference. So the first thing I think we ought to do is.
Did that come out yet? It came out.
It just came out this morning. So we, so we need to look at our calendars and figure that out. The best thing to do is to let Mr. Rosenbaum know if you are interested in attending. I think Ms. Kingsley will be sending that invitation out.
What other things on that calendar? First, second, third, October.
Yeah, it's the 1st of October. There's a Sunday event and it runs through the last of September the 3rd.
Where is it this year?
Williamsburg.
The deadline, if, if you can go, is for registration. I think it's September the 14th. So it's coming up quick and hotels have already started filling up so may not be able to stay at the host hotel.
Now I will tell you that we have encountered a few difficulties in the past. If you make that reservation, there is a time that even if you cancel, that we do not get reimbursed. So if you choose to go, the hotels are not, hotels are charged and the fee to attend is charged. And it's a very small timeline that you have to make that reservation and cancel it. And if you don't, we have to pay for it anyway. So if you will, please look at your calendars, let Mr. Rosenbaum know whether or not you are interested in attending and.
Well, if we have, if we even have one member attend, why don't we just go ahead and rotate that on, rotate that on?
Okay.
That meeting, I mean, we could take care of that.
I have a conflict the week of the 8th through the 14th. So if we need to change our meeting, I, I would move, I would ask that we change it to October the 16th.
Well, who else going? I'm not going. Y'all going?
It's in October. I can't, I'm out on October 4th for almost the entire.
I was considering but.
Well, then we can cancel the meeting. It wouldn't make any difference.
Let's just, can we just change, we'll just change the council meeting to the 16th and.
I don't want to be a problem.
That's not a problem.
It's not a problem and you should go if you are, if you're interested in going.
I will be here the first part of that week, so 16th would work. I think Ms. Eisenhower will be absent.
Cecile.
Cecile.
Clerk's conference.
Yeah. So if you want a clerk, I'm it.
You're pretty good.
We work for. Well, we'll be here for the conference, we'll be just out the week prior too, so we'd have to get the packet to you much earlier. That's fine. I mean, I think we, you can get our packet out as soon as possible, it just gives us more time to read it. So October, so counsel can I have a motion to change the October council meeting to the 16th?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Ms. Patterson.
Aye.
Mr. Howard.
Aye.
Mr. Humphries.
Aye.
And Mayor Lo.
Aye.
Okay. So announcements. We are having Microsoft, or Virginia Highlands Community College is having Microsoft Excel for beginners on September the 7th, which is Thursday, first Thursday, and the opening of opening reception for the World War II in the trenches at William King is, is coming Thursday, September the 2nd.
7th.
7th, I'm sorry. Whites Mill Barbecue Music, September the 9th. Washington County Fair, September 11th through 16th. Opioid overdose and naloxone education and training, September the 11th, Washington County College Library. John C. Maxwell's Law of Leadership, September the 13th. Virginia Highland Small Business Secretary. Women in Business Conference, September the 12th, Virginia Highlands Community College. Microsoft Excel Intermediate, September the 12th, Virginia Highlands Community College. And Microsoft Word Intermediate, September the 21st, Virginia Highlands Community College. Arts Depot Members' Gallery, August the 9th through September the 23rd. Cultivate Craft Market, September the 24th at Paper Moon Studio. And Town Talk with Mayor Low on September the 25th at Bar Photography Gallery and Photographs. As, as Vice Mayor Humphries said, the Over Mountain Victory.
The Over Mountain Victory Trail Celebration.
Celebration is the 20th.
20th, 21st, 22nd, and that would be general public on the 23rd, but the general public survived any of that during that time. And then there's two of that, there's two other things I'm missing out. I think that we have on the 20th of September, Mayor Low's birthday. And then on September 25th, my mother's, my mother's birthday and I won't tell you which one because she'll smack me if I do it.
And my birthday is Bob Howard's anniversary, so we got married and born at different times together.
I don't want to think about that.
Okay. So if there's no further business, I'll call this meeting adjourned.